Tuesday, September fourth, meeting of the county commissioners. Could you please stand for questionable reasons and prayer?
I would like to introduce the fire in the United States of America. It was recovered or was sustained on the nation under drought. The visible vulnerability of the justice for all.
Dear Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business to serve our community. Guide our hearts and minds in the sphere of service, right thought and discussion. Provide us with your supreme wisdom so that our decisions may lead a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance and be this name and prayer. Amen. And you can have a seat now.
Any counselor you have an announcement today?
Yes, just so you know, the consecutive session that was set for the nine thirty minute one has been reset and will be repeated immediately following.
Alright, moving on to A, the first order of business. I believe we have a acknowledging seats, a proposal and authorized review from the Department of ESAP. Ray?
Morning.
Good morning.
Raymond Schultz, Friday, Tuesday, now we have you. We received six responses for our request for proposal. Tyler Technologies, Mark forty-three, Motorola Superyon, Tri-Tec and... Sorry, sorry. Keller, sorry, Keller. We received those digitally and I have a binder and I provided a flash drive. So I have a flash drive if you guys want to copy at some point. That way, but I'm requesting proposal to your... Permission to review those proposals with the technical review. Hi, they're in my... the actual binders are mine.
When were they due, sir?
Last Friday, two Fridays ago.
Okay. I think generally what happens is if there ever is a season you have not opened them until that was publicly handed out or authorized.
Yes, sir. They said something digitally and by... yeah, flash drive. So there wasn't a binder for everything.
And that was approved by the RFP?
Correct.
But you haven't opened those five?
Correct.
And usually where the department had with that, they actually probably have the list of the rest. So we're having to... It's been the vendor and their primary city and state that they're supporting or business. They do not have any power now.
Okay.
At least probably they didn't reach out to them or...
So we know if you can remember.
I know, I like.
And there's a public record.
Yes, sir.
That's all that is.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I will not make a motion to this. I'm not a fan and I can't support the RFP process. I do not want to spend... we're constantly spending more money. That for three to six million dollars is not a... I don't think that's the right approach. I think we need to get Tyler Technologies down there. They still put it on.
Well, I agree. We need to hold time because now he's on the side of the teachers. So this is good to be an assessment.
Are you going to make a motion? I heard this is a common thing to make a motion. Perhaps you should make a motion to physically accept the bid and have them reviewed by the technical review committee and report back to the committee.
Don't move, I hear you. There are seconds? Have you no seconds? Alright, so I put on the table.
Mr. Argusino, is there anything in the RFP that has a tiny component to it that's to the opening of the bid?
Uh, I didn't hear it received by August fourth. So under the statute in respect for the question proposals, the... They can be received in a way that would be... The only restriction by the statute is that no vendor can give any of them by having one seat over the... Or the cabinet or the court. We aren't required to say anything. The bids are required to be open for a period of... Others stay good for a period of the year. I think that... And how we have to consider. I think it's important for... Not only be prepared for changes, but also respect the reality of people that have been black or white. People who are... Issues there. It's important for them, but proceed to see. And also, and you got to do that in respect of our position by what alternative. And I think it would be frankly more wasteful to not go ahead and test the way to do. Except for either not buying anything, the other decision is to decide what to do. But I think it's helpful for multiple reviews, including the test of the... Having tested to be occurred. So I would argue about it.
I can agree with them because it's not that we're approving it. We're just accepting it, knowing them accept it and then they'll come back to us and maybe forward or not depending on whether they're... To do.
Counselor, since you're commenting, the special counsel. In the best case scenario, going forward, if the bids were accepted and there weren't any changes, it would take over a year for any of those changes actually to be made. Is that correct?
I don't know the exact time, but it will take some time to...
Would a year be an accurate statement?
Ray, what do you say?
It's hard to predict because each vendor has their own... Their own process, so good at it, probably eight.
So a waiting of whom? It's not going to kill the desire of some people to spend all this money?
It's not that the decision that we're not making the team to spend money frankly is a commitment by Mitchell Walker, South Dan, Lightfire, all the little fire, township, Hill County. The other town with the bidding resources to process in reliance on this going forward that are prepared to do that committed time for the review. It's frankly disrespectful to them simply to put a halt, a brake on this at this point when we don't gain anything by doing that and what we do gain by doing the review.
Sir, I haven't seen any local agreements between this body, ESAP and the township, if I'm aware of. And regarding any local hearsings from this body, South Dan and Mitchell Walker, I don't recall seeing any that says they will help spend maybe three to six million dollars for what it's might cost. Nor do I... have I seen the county council appropriate any funding for any of this. So therefore, once again, I'm not... Just going to shovel off millions of dollars which could be in the... Now, if some people had worked hard in this RFP, maybe that energy might have been better spent fixing the front for Michael Wensender. But people say it's GIs, some people say it's not. You know, we've... last year it was reported that over ten thousand calls went unanswered. A few months ago it was reported that ninety-five hundred calls were sent to the wrong address. So if this project is something that might help us over a year from now, I would like to see better results than some of that. But, sir.
Oh, yeah, we got to still move in the right direction though. And this isn't that we're not spending any money right now. We're just assessing to see how we can. So I certainly want to create it if we were second, if we can move forward with it and support the ESAP doing that. I mean, I think it's great. Right, we're not spending any money right now.
We're not spending any money right now.
Right.
We can decide after the technical review that you don't want to take any of it.
Right.
But I think that acting without knowing.
Because we're still moving down the same road. I mean, we're going to be assessing what we have now and then we're going to be changing. So we can move it and compare it. If we don't have the issue, we can't compare it. So that's why I'm saying we need to move forward with it.
And also, I'd like to voice comments acting without knowing. I do have a good knowledge on the matters at all. And if this time again, I do allow it to support. So...
With all due respect, we don't know what's in those people. Don't know if there's a new form of technology being proposed. Don't know if there's a new way of operating CAT system which would benefit us. That's something that that we would need to know and it's helpful for us to know in considering how to improve that.
Sir.
So we don't... we don't want to be in a position where we're going to be ignorant of what... That is helpful to us all around it. And it doesn't cost you anything at this point to review them.
Sir, I don't see a way to leave that... For damage something that's been over here across us. And the fact that we've already shelved out three million dollars approximately for a CAT system and we've been paying over three hundred thousand dollars a year in maintenance fees, although this year the fee has been repelled, trying to get the vendor to perform better service. But whatever the issues are, they can be addressed now and sooner. So I guess the concept of just shoveling money at present, a problem is not, I don't think, good at all.
It's good for not shoveling money. Asking the community. You're asking the rest of the way to leave.
And that request was made and you got your answer.
Okay. But you said way to leave. And you asked if your motion for... would you make a motion then to start the new process of re-grad?
Well, sir, if there is no motion to accept these potential bids, essentially accept them, the odds are that we presented on our next commissioner meeting, it could probably be next two day. No, I think it's very low. There's our longtime counsel, the judge player, he can know that. He understands. But you did.
You're going to hope you don't support your own better next two days.
I didn't say that.
There's no...
Actually, we can be taken on to agenda. I would like to do that for... Next for...
Alright, looking forward to seeing you guys next week. Alright, so would you call that table then?
Not making...
That's nothing.
No action on that.
No action, no document. Alright, moving on to B, report and request from the commissioners. An accounts payable docket. Your motion to approve the accounts payable docket.
Yes, I'm making a motion to approve accounts payable docket. Is that line?
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes counted. Good. Alright, moving on to B, fulfillment agreement. Motion for approval, any comments?
I would... I'm sorry, you want to discuss this as well?
I can just make a few comments. This is a settlement agreement for a park located in property at Pur and Girlick Road. And this property is part of the Pur and Girlick Road, um, um, surrounded by projects. And this is a mediated settlement. Both parties are represented by council. We have five years to that. And as you said, past practice, settlement agreement for approval that is open to the board of commissioners. So I am requesting your approval of this settlement agreement. This park is a fair revolution and a manner of... And sir, how much land do you need for this? I think it's point one five something. I think it's a year, not a lot, but it's still here. That there may be more involved in this. Oh, it's less than a quarter of any of that sort of...
And what would that transition cost for here?
I don't have that.
It would be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per acre.
You're asking me to guess, I can't guess.
Okay, just for the record, would you have a counter and state your name and address?
Pretty Phil Garrett, address four twenty-nine, May West, Mitchell Walker, Indiana.
And that's the Claire County engineer office here in some room seven two, up here in the building. The appraisal itself is not just one hundred and acreage. It is also done for any damages that result in the entire appraisal property plus any improvement on site. So merely just projecting out that cost per acre would completely be accurate because the percentage of that is the land value for the per acre. The remaining costs of that are damages, setback damages and any improvement that we have required of property.
Do you have this working down, how much?
Correct, yeah, that's outlined in our appraisal packet.
You have that looking?
No.
Well, I have a question with you on this. Do you want to tell us?
I mean, this was a... it was a proceeding where we had our appraiser, review appraiser, the property owner disregarded the original offer and let the Pur and Girlick Nation work has assigned three appraisers to appraise the property. And then we settled for the mediation of the acre through the court. So I mean, it has been thoroughly reviewed and scrutinized as far as the land value should be.
And then this what's that might have done?
Mediation was sort of...
With the dollar amount that you announced there.
That is negotiated through the parties in part of that mediation process.
On such an important matter, I'd like to hear whenever you call the commissioner there. Sorry, the president fell and was not here. I just found out as the... Just before this meeting, he did not attend. I would like to deal with this matter till next week. Like you can give a little more detail.
That's actually the desired table as perfectly fine as the case. Rhythm and mediation says the agreement is contingent and subject to approval by the board of commissioners of the county. So that has to take place. We approve settlement agreement focusing here in front of the public.
And I might think as long as it's mediation, I think that's something that we need for the commission to prove that we need to follow. And it's been going on for the last couple of years. Now we've arranged it. So I think it's fine that we're going with it. So I prefer not to table, but I do. You know, I must be pretty looking forward to this.
Well, were you at the mediation process, so you're thinking it's near fifty thousand dollars?
Exactly, not fifty thousand dollars.
Approximately.
Seventy thousand is what we're saying.
For one point five acres.
But that's not all.
But per acre cost would be...
It's not that, just because it's one...
Yeah, it's going to be seventy thousand dollars, yeah.
And additional damage besides...
Right. And also the trees, correct?
Correct.
There were trees.
That back as well.
I will... I will... I will make a motion for further reassessment. Was this a request of the counselor or county engineer? Who's this press by?
I think every reply comes from the county department in their system.
Considering... thank you. Considering this question of county department, if the wise words spoken by my fellow commissioner, I will approve this mediation agreement.
Alright, I second that. All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those not approving, okay? No, okay. Ayes counted, yes, we approved the settlement agreement. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, thank you. Alright, now we're going to move forward to number letter C. Resolution, our that two, that sixteen to twenty-eighteen authorization of real property that the board of commissioners, the redevelopment commission has identified various parcels of real estate located in Indiana enterprise area. All of that is cat in hand incorporated and that the board commissioners desire to acquire this parcel. So go ahead, and does anybody have any comments about this resolution?
So the resolution before you today is to set a purchase price and to move forward with the purchase elements of this proposal. The county is seeking to acquire eighty-nine point... Eighty-nine point eight acres and then include a parcel as well as right away along Edison Road east of Walnut. The purchase price would be eleven thousand an acre and the total purchase price would be ninety... Nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Any questions? I would be happy to answer that. Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Charlie. Nearly a million dollars in this.
Nearly a million dollars, that's correct.
And that's coming from lottery tax money paid by the business? Is it an economic zone, a tip district?
It's coming from TIF increment generated within the TIF development area, that's correct, yes.
Is there firm loan money in the bank now or are we going to sell bonds and use bonds now?
So we have cash in hand, but we did sell some bonds previously that are being used to support this purchase.
So we have outstanding bonds, why this?
We have outstanding bonds, period. The land is one of the things that we can use that bond in person for.
Is that what you're... To do this last year, right, a year ago?
Two years ago, yeah. As part of the bond sale process, yes.
What is... what is the goal? What is... what is we don't push what is here, I mean?
So the goal is this piece of property is a key piece as it relates to strategic property acquisition within the development area. The southwest corner of Walnut and Edison. It's a piece of property that would be used to facilitate the Nesswajiny ditch relocation project. Rail plus it provides a thirty-some acre piece of property for a future development parcel. That would be taxable. It would generate taxes for safe for the county.
What if the new target would not taxable? The development area.
For a period of time. And actually, forty-seven acres, I believe, already is untaxable as it's set up as a state nature preserve. So some of the property is currently untaxed in the present.
The Granger's issue, you mentioned the real life of the ditch. The Granger's board does not support the current proposal of the Nesswajiny ditch real life.
I don't believe that's correct, sir. I... the last time we were at the meeting, I believe we were favorably approved to continue moving forward through the permitting process.
I... no, I think you're... I miss... you miss our stance, sir.
I don't think so.
No, well, I'm pretty positive, sir.
Well, I was there.
So you're going to... well, I so was I.
Okay.
And I'm sure that if you were in the minutes of the meeting, it was clearly stated, the board does not approve your proposal.
I don't believe that's correct, sir.
Well, I'm positive.
I... I suppose we could ask the county surveyor who's here, who's...
He recalls, we could ask him. This one, MacIntyre, do you want to comment this time?
Mr. MacIntyre doesn't appear to want to comment on this one.
That's fine.
So, here regardless, and we can certainly...
Well, I think it's important to know that the Granger's board, the Brandy's board, does not support this.
I don't believe that's correct, but... Yes?
Just the interest of this government here. I'm outside my county terminal. Somebody wants to buy or do that.
Well, sir, I want... if you're not... right now you are...
Mr. MacIntyre is here. So why doesn't somebody answer the question? Because I want to know if what you're saying proposing a purchase agreement is true or not. And I'm hearing the flipboard, the alignment of the ditch is approved or not. I just... somebody knows, because I just want to know what to do with it.
Bill would say the wrong thing. I don't know if you would say the wrong thing. I maybe he doesn't understand. I don't know. I wasn't there, so I don't know. That's what you said, though. No, okay, now who are you?
John McIntyre, county surveyor. I don't recall what the minutes said, but as soon as I go back up to the office, I'll grab them and read them and give them to you.
Thank you.
So I cannot say who's correct right here and I'm not going to make it up.
And that's... thank you, honorable surveyor.
Thank you.
But I do feel comfortable fully recalling what the minutes of the meeting say. And also, this whole project, I've not admitted enough. Yes, some of it was approved a year or two ago by a... Some of it by one of the two of them. So I certainly do not approve taking a million dollars of taxpayers' money by land you do not need to take it off the tax rolls on the hope that one day something might happen. People have been waiting for that economic zone for thirty years to turn into a big economic development zone. And taxpayers have too many more important needs for us to shuffle a million dollars. So those are my... for now, I guess the last question regarding this matter, what do you need to share with me?
What was your question?
I'm there.
No, this is...
Sure.
Well, and that's kind of the issue that I found in the area. It's been over a few years, but nothing's been done in that area. That's why I'm trying to move forward so that everything can be economic development. Everything seems to be on the shelf or pulling out, so we can move forward with it. So I certainly don't want to support this, because we can move forward with it. We just have to want to build in this area and improve things. So I certainly... is there a motion to approve this?
I'd like to hear from the county. They're very sympathetic to it, I mean, I'm a problem.
Do you do that now?
Yeah.
We knew there was something to this.
I do.
Well, I thought that was what I was talking about.
Is this like a full term down?
Yes, it is, sir.
It turned on?
Yeah, you have to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, well...
I have three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes, you're going to state your name and address for the record.
On the... on the business transaction here...
Sir, you've got to state your name and address for the record.
Kent Sebastian, senior. I represent the K F K farm, five thousand acres of farm. So on the steel plant, uh... I was on negotiations to get the steel plant here to Coolwall Banker. Well, because I was successful in the line that is used there, put on my farm. So we've had a good business relationship, no problem whatsoever. But I wanted you to know that we have a lifetime agreement to take care of the land that was... that actually was going to wean before we came there. And there was a fire out there caused by the railroad went through that property and the steel plant didn't want to see that go on like that. So they leased my son and I the property, lifetime lease. And maybe you shouldn't agree to allow this project to move forward until you research thoroughly what is happening here. So this property is well taken care of, that was our agreement and we live up to our agreement. And that's why we have... we're farming five thousand acres because we try to do everything right no matter what it is.
Sir, can I ask a couple of questions of you? May I ask a couple of questions of you? Mr. Sebastian, may I ask you a few questions? Now, as I understand it, you and your wife came to a previous commissioner meeting and you wanted to talk about some of this development, but because you couldn't hear, you couldn't follow what was going on, is that correct?
Yeah.
And it's obviously that you have trouble hearing now, I think. You mentioned the steel plant's lifetime gratitude to you of letting you have wine for your lifetime. And are you stating that you also have a lifetime needs on this plan that the county's thinking of buying? Is that your...
Well, it's hard for me to understand, like you said, I'm hard hearing. The reason why I'm hard hearing, I'm only five years away from being ninety. So there is problem.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is Thomas Smeisler, senior, fifty-one oh forty-two Perry View Way. And I have to agree with Commissioner Thomas. I am not a fan of my taxpayer dollars going to developers to think about maybe having some business there someday. I'm not... I'm not in favor of the county or city being in the real estate business per se. If it's going to be a good project there, I would think the developer would be able to go and negotiate a deal with whoever owns the property personally themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Smeisler?
Yeah.
Once again, congratulations and welcome to the first edition feature three's trivia. And also, I would comment, just for the strictest of understanding, the... this area, the new development, has taken out the pollings, borrowing money, paying interest, and now using that borrowed money to potentially buy this land. So when they... when you technically, when you say your tax money, it's technically tax money that's being sequestered in this economic zone.
I realize that.
But when... and when that money's being spent there, it's not helping subsidize the rest of the government.
I know a lot.
So therefore, therefore, your ability to understand, and all taxpayers' ability to feel safe and comfortable is now diminished because one million dollars to helping everybody is now pulled off the people and helping someone else. So technically, they're not subsidizing the general fund and general expenses, expenditures. Technically, they are using their own chip money.
Thank you.
Question. Mr. Shalio, very bothering you, but you look like you're... you're on your phone a lot there. Did you look up the minutes of the meeting on your phone?
Actually, it wasn't on my phone, my phone is here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was stretching because I was just so lost in the moment. There have been, I believe, Mr. Garrett is here to address the issue of farmers' rights on that property. There have been a series of farming contracts on that piece of property. There is not currently a contract in place.
There are, has been four written leases with Mr. Sebastian that the Steel Mill has provided. The most recent lease expired in May of this year and the Steel Mill is not aware of a fifth lease that would extend it from that date at this time.
Mr. Garrett, thank you for that information. Is there any protection for Mr. Sebastian and his family for the hundreds of thousands of dollars of crops they have planted there?
Protection in what?
For the value of all the farm work improvements they make of that land. They have crops there that I would presume they would want to harvest and sell for hundreds of... They have crops there that I would presume they would want to harvest and sell for hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Are there any provisions, or are there any rules in this purchase agreement that's going to be proposed, that protects the current user of, user of that land, and the val- any value of any crops that they currently have on there? Or rights to those crops in the future?
As the county is not currently the owner or possessor of the land, the county has not made contact with the Sebastiels or the Sebastiels farming entities to negotiate what future land, uh, ownership rights might be available to the Sebastiels on that property. This would be a great opportunity to have this conversation outside the forum of a public meeting, however you've chosen to do that here, so we can continue and we can negotiate this matter in, in front of the people.
Oh, Mr. Shalyo, thank you. Actually, you brought this matter to this public.
I did.
In fact, it was not even legally advertised before the eight business hours, as by, as by state law.
I believe that it was.
No, it was not, sir.
It was placed on the agenda Friday, which would then give it forty-eight hours.
Monday was a holiday, sir. The original agenda, as posted and advertised, did not include any of these topics, any over a million dollars.
Would you like to have me acquiesce and bring this to your next meeting, whether it's, uh, I would love to be allowed to be on your Tuesday claims meeting, if allowed to, I would love to present...
Everybody's always welcome to a meeting if it's properly by means, if they're properly legally advertising properly, but I want to go back to Mr. Garrett. Same question.
I just want to...
No, I want to still have an answer for Mr. Garrett, the question I just asked. Are there any, in this purchase agreement, are there any rights to protect the current farmer who's been leasing the land, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars they've got invested in that land, whether it's the crop that's going to grow and be harvested, the rights to put their trucks on that land and harvest that crops, or any of your equipment or establishment that are up? You mentioned that there was four leases, the last were expiring, made of twenty eighteen. I would think that would mean that the farmer would have no rights, unless it's spelled out in this contract.
The purchase agreement between the Steel Mill and the County, I don't know.
Yes, and in their, in that agreement, which somebody gets to know about, who Paul is an expert on it, is there any provisions for the current lease, and any rights of current lease, if I may or may not have?
The purchase agreement makes, makes no provisions for any third party.
You have to do that after you approve it, that we forward it.
Well, I, I don't know.
You can't use, well, that's something you can reform.
I think that a purchase agreement would include such important things.
No, a purchase agreement does not, we deal with something different, like a bigger case, it's not, not that they don't understand that.
Well, I, I think you may not understand that.
No, I understand other business owners.
That's good for you.
Can I talk to this country a bunch of publications, so, and if you can read, just if the tax, tax is provided, and notice that the meeting can have, the early meeting provided the angle of the card, and they're just wanting to, the agenda sort of sort of way. Now, the government of L. N. T. doesn't necessarily need to be amended, agenda can change, the monologue can be changed, it's not, it's set up and down, and many times, the fires and, and, so, the meeting was properly voted and advertised, but I wanted to play our part.
The meeting, the meeting was advertised, but this agenda item was added not within the forty-eight hours required by state law.
That, Mr. Agustin, I thought you said, you said no on that, and I was like, no.
No, that's not, that's the law, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that everything that we're operating, we're doing, we're meeting. Yeah, so the, the meeting was held as properly, and the purpose of that is so that items that come up on the agenda, uh, are voted on publicly.
Thank you, sir. Now, items that were not legally on the agenda, not advertised, do they get discussed and voted on?
Uh, the, what's, what's required is the notice of the meeting, the agenda can be modified, either at the beginning of the meeting, and the important thing is action to take. Now, there are specific items that require the man to notice, this would not be one. We should allow in, in the, of open...
Don't you think the spending of nearly a million dollars on such a controversial issue would require a forty-eight hour legal advertisement?
As a matter of, of law, not necessarily, but as a matter of policy, or how you want to, both things, in a political sense, as your pride, as board as a whole.
Thank you. Well, in a fair, open, transparent government, that's scary to open citizens, I would say. I, I, I think this, this might contribute to advertising more than ever.
Some cable?
I think the county's suggesting cable was a...
Also, record, did we move the cable? Your motion's cable? No action? No action? So, efficient we are here? Okay. All right, uh, so also have the capacity to purchase a new, because you didn't have the resolution. So let's move on to the assessor, request approval for two leased vehicles. Anybody here make any comments about that? County assessor's offered to request two leased automobiles for use throughout the county for the Ford Escape twenty eighteen, and twenty eighteen to view at non-fore. Any motions to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the request of the honorable Senator Lieutenant Cecil R. Richard, to purchase the Q twenty eighteen Ford Skates.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed, all right, ayes have it, we'll move on. Public Safety Communications Control, request approval for Motorola Solution Service Agreement. Uh, any comments from Ray Schultz?
Well, yeah. Hi. So I've proved, I provided a brief explanation, uh, last week at your request, uh, the email associated, and the others. Basically, uh, this was approved in twenty fifteen as part of the radio contract by the board of commissioners. When we accepted the, the, uh, the radio's completion, the project completion, it kicked in, uh, a service agreement for maintenance. Uh, because of the different changes that have happened, we thought it was a good idea to bring this back to, to you all for approval.
Any comments?
Thank you, I think Mr. Fludding, uh, asked the best question of you, and you responded, you emailed, uh, as you just stated, and, uh, and I congratulate you, and I appreciate your wisdom with Brett Quinones, negotiating a better contract.
Yes.
And, uh, and I also would note, uh, according to Leviticus twenty-six, three twenty-nine, that leadership, like life, is the subtotal of the decisions we've made. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Second. Oh, I make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second that.
Nathan Schultz, Director, request regarding the reason of, of purchasing this agreement.
All right, I second that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye have it?
Thank you.
All right, that's that, moving on. All right, public works, there is consent agenda. Consent agenda will be at Hospice Foundation and Bike Machinical, is an annual bike machinical hospice. Anything else? Motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve the agenda, don't worry.
All right, second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it? Moving on to B, public works, B, request approval of memorandum of understanding for the railroad overpass over the, maybe National Railroad Track Improvement on Douglas Road.
Good morning, Jessica Clark, county engineer, offices here in County District eleven seven eighty-two. Before you is the memorandum of understanding for a potential future project, uh, along Douglas Road, the building grade separation over Canadian National. We are partnering with City of Mishawaka on this project, as far as submitting a local tracks application to receive grant funding. The project itself moves between twenty-sixty, twenty-nine million, with that grant, our verbal commitment will be between four and four point five. How good the provisions is, I don't know, you said, request your approval to the first name of you, Mayor Wood has signed.
Any comments?
Uh, I think the engineer and staff, Mad Engineer and staff, are keeping abreast of all these government opportunities to maximize our taxpayer dollars for projects that actually serve everybody. And that, uh, I think the City of Mishawaka, where we will agree with cooperation, they'll come up with the percentage of the match to get the federal ballot. We've got this with Duckheart County, we've got this with South Bend, we've got with the City of Mishawaka, and we're going to do the City of Mishawaka what's good.
I think it's a great idea, and we do the board, we do Mishawaka, and the board. So, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the request of Mad Engineer.
I'll second that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say ayes have it?
Thank you.
Okay, see you down, there's no hold there. All right, and any public comments? Okay, public comments, the minute limits.
Thomas Smeizel, senior, fifty-one oh forty-two Prairie View Way, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here with, uh, some German Township residents here today. I used to be, uh, the president of the German Township Homeowners Association, and, uh, we have a situation was created in the county by the city of South Bend, in regard to development in the Porish Prairie Project, which is causing, uh, great concern, which we tried to warn, we talked, I talked, I'm kind of disappointed my commissioners here, I'm glad that the engineer, county engineer's here today, but I'm disappointed my, uh, my county commissioner isn't here today to hear this, but, uh, in regard to the traffic, the noise, and the safety issues we have on Adams Road, Portage Highway, uh, Orange Road and Mayflower Road, this is getting to be a disaster out there. Uh, we just had, uh, an issue with my neighbor's, uh, traffic sign being knocked down about twenty-five feet away from his daughter's bedroom window, uh, where somebody's speeding in the wrong direction on the wrong side of the road, losing control and just missing a telephone pole by about a foot. Um, I've got pictures of that to prove that situation there. Uh, I've got a couple other, uh, people that live on Adams Road that had both of their children's vehicles hit, coming out of one of the businesses there that didn't stop for a stop sign, uh, on Adams Road by the new, uh, warehouses there on Adams Road. This is just a horrible situation, I mean, our traffic has increased, and I would, uh, dislike to ask, uh, if there's something that could be done, uh, I don't, I don't know what exactly what at this time, but something needs to be done before somebody gets killed out there. Uh, we have got, uh, traffic that is flying up and down the road, drag racing, uh, racing, we've got clutch rocket motorcycles going on one wheel up and down the road. I've got a statement here from one more neighbor I'd like to give, if they'd like to get a few more seconds of your time. Uh, I have to relay this to my sympathetic concerns of commissioners, here are my issues. Speeding down Adams towards Portage intersection west to east, Jack Rabbit starts, speed from Adams away from Portage intersection to west, Jack Rabbit starts in the Portage- Adams intersection all directions, counted by loud, broken, nonexistent mufflers above three inches, seem to be anima from all manners of vehicles, muscle cars, pickup trucks, motorcycles, et cetera. This is from Tim Wilson on Portage Adams Road. Aside from obvious dangers associated with excessive speeding, the noise outside is sometimes so loud that I have to stop my conversations for a few seconds until the speeding motors are past. It just, it's definitely worse around commuting times, drivers rushing to get to work or get home, but also randomly, randomly throughout the weekends, especially nicer weather. I would encourage and welcome increased, increased presence along Adams and Portage Roads. I believe the increased presence of traffic patrols would go a long way toward calming down, uh, vehicle or behavior. Let's not wait until someone gets killed, Tim Wilson, or fifty-one oh forty-nine Portage Road. He asked me to relay this message, the meeting is during the day, and if there's something the county engineer can do to look at this situation, it'd be highly appreciated, and, uh, I, I just wanted to bring, and there's other neighbors that have the same concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smeizel, very question and answer, we don't necessarily have to answer, but I will start at the beginning. Uh, I, I, I gladly will sometimes, uh, mention the four attendants, some of my questions, but I, but I think today, Mr. Kestrelly, although it was exact issue, I understand it's, it's, uh, of, of, a sympathetic nature, but if you knew about it, you would, uh, you would excuse it. I'm not going to count for his other four, four, four attendants, right here. I've been on this board over ten years, a long circuit, I've never missed a meeting, I've never missed a vote. But, uh, today, I believe he has, uh, sympathetic reasons for not being here. Uh, on the issue of, uh, all the crazy annexation that happened in German Township years ago by previous South Bend boards, you know, it was very unfair to the residential German Township, getting annexed by a South Bend city board that you have no vote or control over. And, uh, we're, and they really didn't listen to you citizens at all.
Right.
And it's just, and it's a shameful thing to do, the current city council board, it seems to be very responsive, you know, I mean, protecting the rights, and seeing the lunacy, and trying to put the, realign the South Shore and the Arctic. So, uh, but in the meantime, we've inherited this somewhat of a mess, for what, what city, what county, what city, what county, and, uh, and I, and our engineering department works diligently to try to address some problems, and we're united with, as I mentioned earlier, a little, a little Mishawaka, right, work with South Bend, we'll try to get this area, uh, more on the radar, as best as able, and, uh, we do have here coming, and, uh, the river's starting to dry, so, thank you for sharing these concerns with us, and, uh, sure, I'll ask the, the public courts to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name's, uh, Mike Keros, I have one zero two four Prairie View Way, Mr. Smeizel neighbor. I'm the resident, with my daughter's bedroom twenty-five feet away from where this vehicle possibly almost hit the telephone pole. I've lived there for about a year, we built a home there, I've lived in German Township for about twelve years. Um, what I've seen, like, I will second what he says, as you guys say, second and third and this and that, I'm going to second what Mr. Smeizel says, and I'm going to probably third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and a hundredth, what probably the rest of the neighbors say down Adams Road. It's dangerous out there, the speed limit is forty miles an hour, these people are doing sixty plus seventy, by the time they reach our house, which is only probably two hundred feet from the corner of Adams and Portage. I personally seen multiple times motorcycles riding willies, I've seen cars drag racing, I've seen commercial vehicles, which there are clearly no signs for trucks out there from the industrial park down there. I'll, I'm not going to name names, but it's a pop delivery service, and it's a mail delivery service out there. Those guys are doing sixty, seventy miles an hour to try to speed back to the factory or their warehouse at the end of the business day. I'm pretty sure they're not stopping to deliver any packages out there, so my concern is what are they driving down the road for? Few years ago, it was repaved, we have a mile-long drag strip there with no stop signs, nothing, and these people are driving crazy at all times, from five-thirty in the morning, I sleep next to that, and I hear loud cars waking us up in the morning, even on the weekends, we get the business traffic, we get commuters, but then we also get weekend warriors, is what I call it, guys out there, there's sports cars, guys on the motorcycles, driving up and down, fast, really fast. It's, it's getting a little crazy out there, and, and like I said, it is, it, it hit me this weekend, we went out of town overnight, we came back, and I found a roadside down, roadside down, and I talked with Tom about it, and that's ultimately why we're here. My neighbor butts up against Tim Wilson's yard, like Mr. Smeizel was saying, and, and it is getting very, very loud out there with the construction traffic and the residents. Biggest concern is a safety issue. Somebody is going to eventually get hurt and/or killed out there, when you have motorcycles riding willies, and people exceeding the speed limit by one and a half to two times. The speed limit's, again, forty miles an hour, and these cars are doing not even a quarter mile in their acceleration west towards the industrial parks or their homes, they're, they're doing sixty miles an hour at least by the time they get our stuff in there. So, if there's anything that can be done, that's what I'd ask. I, I would request that maybe we could get a few stop signs out there, that's not going to cost millions of dollars like whatever other budget issues have been talked about here. There is an intersection out there at the corner of Mayflower and Adams, it can easily have a four-way stop foot, and I'm sure there's been accidents there before, there probably will be more, but there is a mile gap in between Portage and Mayflower there, that somehow, some way, traffic needs to be slowed down, even maybe possibly speed bumps, if that's what it comes to, because people are out of control out there, and eventually, it's going to cost someone.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Any other public comments?
Uh, well, go ahead, sir.
Uh, K and K Park, Kent Sebastian, I want to relate to what the previous person had to say about the traffic problem, and we've got the tra- traffic problem because the toll road has increased the price of, you know, the toll road, so they get off on a thirty-one bypass and come to two and twenty. Well, we live on twenty, we see how bad the traffic is, and we need a light at Larison because of all the semis coming in and out of there, including our own. We'll have, this fall, we'll have in the neighborhood of two hundred semi, our own farm operation, and then take all the rest of them too, if you imagine how bad it is to get across there, it really is, it's serious, et cetera. But maybe the county officials can relate to what's happening out there, with that toll road traffic added to the, the present traffic. So, uh, uh, I want to also say that, uh, on my property out there, at Nookalow, there's been some movement going on about taking our farm away from us for future industry. And I'll tell you right now that that... And I'll tell you right now that that farm is not for sale, it will not be used by any county official. So, uh, when I say our farm's not for sale, it's a family farm, and it's not only for myself, it's for our children, for our grandchildren, and if, if that happens, if they come out there with the idea that they're going to tear our farm up, I'm saying that it's not going to happen, even though if we have to go to court, we'll go to court.
Any further comments?
Thank you. And Mr. Sebastian, when people, Mr. Sebastian, when people say that your land isn't developed, does that hurt you because you spent eighty-plus years as a, and as an American veteran, developing that land, a family farm, and they tell you it's not developed, how does that make you feel?
Well, naturally, uh, you know, I've been there my whole life, in that area, and I've farmed my whole life, and I know how to be successful in running an operation, and that's why our farm operation has grown to fifty farms, fifty-two, I'm not sure about that. And so, we're not, we're not small potatoes. Maybe, maybe as a farmer, we don't get the respect that we need, but that's not too much to be asking for either.
And isn't it true that your land has abnormally high yields because it's such good farm soil, and then in fact, you, you grow a lot of seed corn, which is what all the other farmers on the planet are dependent upon, because your soil is so good?
Yeah, we're, we're, we've got seed corn on our farm and, uh, regular corn and soy beans that makes up our, our operation.
Thank you, and, and I've often mentioned the problems and need for a light at Larison too. There's been serious accidents and several deaths, but the state needs to wake up and put a stoplight there.
Thank you very much.
And then, in the room, I, we have the honorably elected Dolores Shasker from, uh, German Township advisory board, I see. Shasker, our new board. How nice to see you, honorably elected official, visiting us.
My name is Dolores Shasker and I live at two-three-three eight-one Adams Road, which is three houses away from the corner of Mayflower. And our road has just gotten out of pan and so many people from the new factories run our road like it's a racetrack, and we have a young man that comes down about, about eight-thirty every night on, doing a wheelie down Adams Road, and he starts at the bypass and he goes all the way to Portage, which is about a mile and a half. And should he come down that hill before Mayflower, he's going to, and a car goes through there, he's going to cut the car in half and possibly kill a mother and a couple of children or that. There's just been an accident at Mayflower and Adams, I'm not sure who was at fault, we keep our nose out of that, and, uh, and then there's been a lot of wrecks at the new factory. Um, they come out of that parking lot, they don't stop for anybody on Adams Road, uh, down the road, uh, Joe Augustino's daughter, who had just gotten her driver's license, somebody came out of that factory, didn't even stop, the, they ran right into her, and I, I think it's horrible for a teenager to start off her driving life to have somebody from the factory that doesn't have any respect for our road. And I'd like to see more police presence. We do have a police, Mishawaka policeman that lives on our road, but I don't know if he has any jurisdiction or that, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I will remind everybody that we have another executive we need to turn to, so we will not be available for much discussion after this meeting. Apologies.
Motion to recess?
Motion to recess?
Second, all of them favor aye?
Aye.
Okay, we want to recess.
Jessica? Is there anything that you, you know?